Patient work session. And the first item is announcements, Dr. Cash?
The, uh, there aren't really any new announcements. I do think that, uh, today is about what, I would request the board members to review timelines of projects and where we are and suggestions for the board to consider moving forward. But, uh, as far as any new announcements, uh, I'm happy except to tell you that the girls' golf team at Bradley and the boys' golf team at Long Island did very well in the state finals. Probably goes to...
Very nice, that's really good. Ms. Cash, please.
No, like I said, my team, the work is great, they're tomorrow's chairman of the fourth area will be getting out money from to...
I do have one to consider, uh, say, is that, uh, our legislators have asked when we would like to have a legislative meeting. So, uh, that might want to look at your calendar, so when we leave Thursday, we can kind of talk about it.
Okay, um, now, I know in the past we've done breakfast.
Yeah, I think that's what they prefer.
In December or January?
I, I can ask, which one's that, but...
Uh, the next item is timeline of projects for the dreaming project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think, uh, most everybody in the room has seen this at some point in time. And so this is really just an update on things. The Bradley Central High School baseball field house is well underway. The front facade is actually already on and they're framing up interior walls, plumbing electrical erupt. And they're making good progress. His target is complete and turned over by January 1st. So, those not affect baseballs or something like that. The Bradley Central High School secure vest- secure entry vestibule, uh, is substantially complete. We've got our CO. We're working through a handful of items on punch list, uh, and, uh, and then we can close that off completely.
Better come on when the lockdown is...
We're thinking within the next couple of months, uh, or a couple of mitigating circumstances that we're going to go through. Long story short, we, we had a contractor that we were working with. That contractor's contract is out and we held some of the retained, just to get some of the items taken care of. They weren't properly taken care of at the beginning. So we're looking to resolicit through a different partner, or party, I should say. Putting the scope out to complete what's remained of that one. Does that make sense?
What, what is left on that work?
So there was some damaged panels during the time period and I took panels off because once we were given the certificate of occupancy, the next morning we had water that was inside our building. And so we had to uncam, take all the panels off and track back to why the water was entering. While that, those panels were taken off, they were not adequately stored and they were scratched in some cases. And so the new panels that would go in that are not scratched, uh, is one of the items. There's also some items on the roof to make sure it's properly taken care of. And there was one, the lights been fixed, uh, as of this morning in there. And there's a couple of the punch list items. Susan, you want to speak to what's remaining on that punch list? Really just about that one?
I think you pretty much covered it. It's mostly just some cosmetic exterior work. And then the roof is watertight, but we just want to make sure that warranty wise, everything is per, per manufacturer's installation details.
I do want to ask, um, we do have Rachel on our virtual call and she was not able to hear everyone as well. She just asked if we could all come and speak up, that would be great.
Very good. Any other questions on the, uh, front of the water issues taking care of? And we, I have to bring somebody else to install those panels, but there's still warranty from the original company? There is.
Did we have to repaint the whole panel?
Yes, sir. Yes. That was what we said about the contract.
What was that contractor again?
Uh, Cherokee Construction was the, uh, general contractor, uh, for the vestibule. And the, uh, the metal panels were a subcontractor out of, uh...
Talahoma.
Uh, no, out of, uh, Clarksville.
Clarksville.
Any other questions about the vestibule?
Did they hide an offset pocket in there with rail of that front? You don't put...
The, the awning from the vestibule to, to the, uh, to the drop off, uh, has been repainted by, uh, by maintenance. And there's a capital outlay.
Hey, there are also Mr. Rice and, um...
Hi, Mr. Mike.
Mr. Spangler will, will request a capital outlay for next year. And we've talked about this before, to put lights underneath it and disentain. So that would be out of, if, if, if the board chooses to do that, that's where that would happen.
Well, if we're going to make that, nothing to make it off now. You know?
Yeah, I agree.
And can she hear us now? Hey, Rachel, can you hear better?
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, okay.
Okay. The next item is Bradley Central High School side swing. We, uh, have teed up, uh, if you recall, the original design, we got through design development. That design development has to be redone to upgrade the facility to storm shelter to qualify for the FEMA grant. So we have re-released and their co-architects compiling their engineering team and, and, and kind of remodeling everyone around, uh, that design revision in anticipation of, uh, of a FEMA check. Kind of any time now.
As of this morning.
The last tip up was archaeological survey, nothing was found and...
So there's been communication with Melissa Presswood on the grant side of things, uh, with Kate at the state level. And as of this morning, uh, everything has passed through FEMA. And so it's now kicked back to the state and the state is giving, they have a window of time to allow the, uh, figures at the state level to make an announcement. If they choose not to make that announcement, then it'll go ahead and release. But if they so choose to make their announcement, it's something to do with representatives. But that timeline is sticking at this point and so we should be having a check within the next seven months. As well, Kate said she need to give exact that, but she said, we have very anywhere and the money has been raised.
I think the biggest thing is that it's cleared all hurdles. The money is there and it's just now a technicality of, uh, the legislators choosing when to make an announcement.
How long we like the building?
So we're anticipating, uh, I think you, you've talked about expediting the design process. I think we were originally talking about six to eight months of design. We may be able to crash some of that, uh, two to three months of permitting and I think we're accounted for 15 months of construction.
Okay, when that redo, is that going to change what we're trying to do?
No, sir, it's going to change, it's mostly going to change the structure. So not the, not the aesthetics of it, not the layout. We're still, we're, we're taking the, the opportunity of, of draw revision. We're taking the opportunity to revisit with, uh, with the, the staff. It's going to be, the faculty that's going to be, uh, working in this building to see if there's any sort of minor tweaks that they want to the facility and we're incorporating those as part of the redesign. But, uh, but no, sir, we're looking at about six to eight months, I think be, six months.
That's about right. I mean, we're, we're, there are a few tweaks ultimately how the overall building is going to look. Part of that is just because we're footage.
Remember we had party in front of what we had? We wanted to look more...
And that's in this...
Not garden.
Yeah, this, this right, this right here is, is representing kind of bringing that scale into, that's something that's more appropriate for this, this size building that's going to better match what you've got on the other side there. And that's what we're trying to do. So there's, there are a few tweaks since you've seen it last. We did some really quick kind of renditions last time. But we've had more time to really get our head around what the new layout looks like and how this can all get integrated.
So Mr. Cash, when I'm looking at this, it has an estimated completion date in July 2007. And are we still on target for now?
What we're pushing for?
Thank you.
Yes. The, uh, next one is Hobo Elementary, uh, the expansion there. We started phase one, which is a 12 classroom addition. Those 12 classrooms will then be occupied by the upper class, uh, of their student body starting next fall. And will abandon what is affectionately referred to as the dungeon. That dungeon will be demolished and a gymnasium will be built as part of phase two. And then the, the gymnasium will be relocated from its existing location into the new gym. And the library will be built out in the existing gymnasium as part of phase three. So those are the three phases. We are, uh, we are well into phase one. They put the second fourth slab on there last week and they've, they've got masons on site. And the second four walls are going up, uh, starting yesterday. So super exciting, get a lot of progress and so far, everything's going very smoothly.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Oak Hilly Bill, we are substantially complete. We have our CO on the building itself. There's a little bit of an amenity, uh, happening outside of the building and we're working through some elevation differences. And, uh, and trying to get those tweaks modified. But there'll be a, a small turf area outside that's like an accessible courtyard. And then available outdoor green space, uh, for these students. That's the only remaining piece. All the interior work is complete at this point.
So if you are, uh, looking at a, a new building sit here to the right of that, there, you know, where the retaining wall is, that will be the green space right there. So the sidewalk comes around and the green space is on that side of it. And that's what they're working on now.
But they're using...
In between the five, the, yes.
They're using right now.
Between the new CDC classrooms and the cafeteria.
They're using the building right now, courtyard's not been let open.
Did they redo, remember that other, not the building, other he wanted redone?
Yes, sir, they've done, uh, where they, they repainted, they...
The renovation of the interior.
The, the new bathrooms are in, yeah.
Yes, sir. And the, the new bathrooms. Recall there was a, there was a single, uh, conference room. That was the CDC classroom initially. Now it's a conference room, secretary's office and gang restroom. And then this is the IEP conference room now. But all of those renovations and the cosmetic upgrades inside that building are all complete.
So we'll have, uh, ribbon cutting when that, when they finished with the outdoor section. And then, and the teachers, along with administration, then asked if we would hold until everything was complete. So, and I think we honored that for them.
And I might add, we couldn't, this one was, uh, completed, I think, uh, correctly, $1.7 million under budget.
Yes, it was under budget.
Wow, $1.7 million?
Yes.
Which we needed somewhere else.
Parkview Elementary, uh, uh, we had a successful bid solicitation. Happy with our contractors so far. We have, uh, begun clearing and, uh, the, the, the first playground, the first step is relocating the playgrounds so that we can clear the paths for the new buildings. And, uh, the first playground is being installed in the second stage. And, uh, and we're working through a permitting issue and then should have foundations going in. The goal is to get out of the ground before the end of November. So have foundations in before the end of November.
And with this, I do want to give a shout out to Montel and the state fire marshal because we had run into a problem, um, with permitting and at the, at the fire marshal's office. And, uh, they, uh, reaching out, they worked wonderfully, bumped everything so that we could get that out of the ground in time before winter. And so I know a lot of times, you know, we talk about working with the state, that was very well done.
So those are, that's kind of an update on the proj- projects that are in process already, funded and underway. The, the next portion, we want to talk about growth in the county and city. We want to talk about, uh, uh, new rooftops that are coming. We talk about the next, uh, projects that are not yet funded, uh, that are proposed but not yet funded. So the school districts, uh, you can see the different zones on there. And we've attempted to overlay, hopefully this didn't get too cluttered. But we've attempted to overlay new residential development. We threw some photographs on here because a lot of these are well underway. They're not high in the sky at some point in the future, they're well underway. And, uh, and so this kind of gives you an idea, a lot of growth on the northwest, but a tremendous amount of growth on the northeast quadrant. Tremendous amount of growth on the northeast quadrant. Growth all over the county, really. But these are kind of some of the major developments that are in the pipeline.
Okay.
Some of both, some of both. Now, what we attempted to do here was, uh, was focus on the, these particular districts and how many new residences are proposed within those specific school districts. And then this is really the telling line. When you look at the northeast quadrant, uh, there's 100 units of residential proposed in the city of Cleveland, 652 in the county. The northwest, it's 150 in the, in the city, 101 in the county. Southwest, none in the city, 100 from county. Southeast, 200, 600, uh, respectively. So you're, you're talking about 750 units of residential on the northeast quadrant. And 250 on the northwest quadrant and almost 800 in that south. To say southeast is really the east side. And, and so the, uh, the thought was to alleviate, to alleviate the congestion and accommodate the, the growth that is really happening within this quadrant of the county. The notion was to identify and acquire the Dry Valley site, which in the inset here, you can see is on that northeast quadrant. And that will allow some, some modest rezoning that will alleviate, we're expanding Parkview as it sits. But, uh, even with the expansion in Parkview, a classroom expansion in Parkview, we're assuming that one's going to fill and Michigan Avenue is already full. And that will shift things around, North Lee is near full. And a, a new school in that northeast quadrant will alleviate everything in the north and the east side, if that makes sense. So what we have proposed is a new, um, 600 student elementary school on Dry Valley Road. We close on the property, uh, over the summer. We've got a long entry road. It's about a mile and a half past the jet port. As you drive out there, they're depressed in the road and you can see a, you'll see a, a Bradley County Schools sign up there starting tomorrow. They're going to install a sign tomorrow, so you can find the site. We've got a long entry road. We set this, the school back up on a hilltop. That hilltop is going to allow us to, to balance the site and alleviate some of the earthwork, significant earthwork. But it'll also give us a, a longer entry road, which you find over and over, logistical problems of stacking cars. This should get, we, we have 120 feet of ride away coming up here. We should be able to put enough of an entry road up there that we, that we can get all the cars stacking for drop off and pickup off of Dry Valley to alleviate traffic.
We do not own the land in front of the road.
We, we, you see a yellow outline on this. We, we, we set the survey and negotiated with the lands, land, the original landlord of the seller to, uh, to purchase, you see a, a turn lane here, an exit there, a pond location here, uh, 100, 120 foot wide, a little over 1,200 feet long, I think, roadway, right away through there. And then a 40 acre site, all told, it's right at 40 acres. But it's the entry road and it's the, the path for the building.
And then how many acres do we need to now make it?
40 acres, uh, gives us, gives us what we need. Yes, sir.
Anything less than 40 acres, you're, you're going to outgrow the schools faster than... Right, no, no. So like if you look at some of our schools, Michigan Avenue and Red, we are suddenly in law. And, and so even when we start to look, there's no way we can relieve the traffic, there's no way. So if you're looking at that acreage, that kind of acreage, you're, you're also looking at how do the, how do you get the cars in there? How do you get the buses in there? All of those, so the recommendation, Pete, Susan, they want to speak to this? What they're looking for in, uh, specifically acreage for elementary schools now?
What's the difference in how many they've had and they've discovered hospitals?
Well, typically you have more athletic fields if you have middle school or high school. So you have less to be concerned about beyond stacking, preparing the playground, playgrounds, things of that nature for an elementary school. So you'll need less. So I mean, I think we're, what did we end up with, was it 40?
52 acres.
Did it do with them? I'm looking at... For Dry Valley, that's 40. 40.
A little more.
And I think part, part of the reason with that 40 is you've got enough topography to contend with. Then that all belongs to fully, fully uniformed.
Correct, correct.
So you're getting, yeah, and buildable lives if you're 25, yeah, to 30, I think that's you. If, if you have a perfect site, that's typically what we're working on in elementary school.
Good rate or flat?
If it's relatively flat, obviously you could get away with less acreage.
How many acres are we at in Parkview? Do you mind if I just draw up a guess to it?
Don't recall, a lot of that acreage is not buildable because of the geothermal grid that's hanging around.
And the other component of the Parkview is, I think the county, correctly not wrong, uh, the county purchased the land and then gave us a portion of it for the school because Parks and Rec and fire also has things over there. So I think the county purchased the overall, I'm not sure exactly how many acres are.
We can get back to y'all if that...
Yes, Amy, that was, that was Parkview's footprint that we laid in on Dry, Dry Valley side to get an idea of how much room we would need, if I was you, I guess. It's, it's very complex.
But now, and when we look at the capacity, the, the, adding the classrooms is, will give us more capacity. But right now, um, their capacity is under 500. So you need, you, you're going to have to...
Parkview's...
Parkview have to own cafeteria.
Yes, and you will also have to, now, their, their gym and their cafeteria are the right size. For the additions, that's why it was so economically, because you don't have to touch the gym, you're not touching the cafeteria. So you can add those classrooms. But the core area, which is, or just the classroom, she doesn't have the, did not, before we're adding classrooms, have the, have much capacity beyond that 400, 450.
I see on the drawn interior is pond or that back of the section, you said it would be another pond?
So with, with the, with the hilltop running this way, the ridge of the hilltop running this way, you're in two drainage spaces. So the road will need its own pond and then all the impervious areas back here will grow into a second pond.
So required by permitting, you have, you have to have ponds with so much land and surface. And so a lot of those existing ponds being in place, it drives down our cost of having to go in and dig out ponds. We already have those things that are with the lay of the land on site. So that really was part of the selection of this, just in this effort to keep costs down.
The law already...
Correct, it already has a pond to it.
Same regardless of...
Yes. So to be mean, it's... And we'll go get, and stop if there's a vision thing. So... So if we go back, if we go back more quickly to Parkview, how many additional students are going to be able to service there from that expansion?
I, I'm gonna, I'll defer to Pete. So if, but if you're building for a classroom, depending on the size of the, whether it's elementary or intermediate, you are maximum, uh, 20, 20 to 25 extra kids per class.
I thought we were building a classroom.
You're building a classroom, yeah.
And there is 25 per class, okay.
So roughly...
About 80 kids, yeah. And you really don't want to get much larger than that.
What will that make him approximately?
About 630.
About 600 by size of what? So when we have that capacity then, even though the school was built for a smaller population with the addition, with the additions you do, but, uh, when, when, uh, when that part will be designed that they already, because it just, it was designed to add home, so none of that...
Cafeteria is probably larger than the...
Right.
That, that's why it's created to be so much less than some of the others.
Exactly, it's not much because it's...
On here, here.
Didn't have to explain.
Correct. And I, I just, a couple of numbers. With respect to the Hobo expansion, how many additional students do we think will be able to service there? Is, is the math the same?
So four of those classrooms are CDC.
Okay.
And eight of those classrooms are, uh, upper class, so fourth and fifth grade.
Yeah, but some are, are... Time, time, time.
Some, some are replacing the fourth and fifth grade classrooms that we're demolishing. So the net add, uh...
Yeah, you're, you're going upwards of, you'd say around 25 per classroom with eight classrooms for fourth and fifth grade. So that'll bring it upwards around 200. And it's pretty much a good way to look at it, plus whatever your CDC population is going to be for the other four classrooms.
How many classrooms are we losing? How many are we...
Eight, you're lost, you're losing, uh... Six. Six.
Was it six, six of those?
So the net add of six classrooms, yeah.
So you've got to add six classrooms.
We're building 12.
But six, I'll shift it, yeah. So you're building six. And then we have, um, space, the way this was being designed, we could add how many more? Four or...
Four down, four up.
Yeah, eight or possibly an eight one we needed. And there again, you're at, she's at that 435, 450 capacity now.
So there's extra stage right there.
Right. Yeah, you don't need to do much with that. So a lot of our elementary schools are going to be hitting 600.
Could teach you?
Yes.
Want to build a Parkview, go, uh, Dry Valley, demolish it in that range. It's not an option, it's illegal.
I'm at North Shore, where do you post your, are we in the southwest or southeast?
Prospect is in the west.
Okay.
Prospect is out here. Holdwell will be in the northwest, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So when you say drop out, what, what areas would you say would start this and pick up? You said the north.
Northly, I, I think Michigan Avenue. Our, our thought process is that it would, it would reallocate and alleviate, allow some redistribution really from North Lee, Michigan Avenue and Parkview. And potentially over there.
So that would be the northeast?
Well, that's...
And the northeast quadrant, yeah.
Charleston bits. So northeast, four, northwest.
Charleston.
Two part of that.
So the expansion at Holdwell, I think, covers the, 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 the northwest. The new school, uh, Dry Valley, we think alleviates the east and the north.
It alleviates that Highway 11 growth with all those residences that are coming out of White crazy and as well as the Michigan Avenue, it's all around Michigan Avenue and Dry Valley.
So what's the plan? So that takes care of the northeast and the northwest. What takes care of the southwest and the southeast?
Perfect time. So the next, the, the next project in the, in the, uh, in the, in the proposals is an expansion in Waterville, uh, a classroom expansion in Waterville. And to expand Waterville, recall, we just put the Portables in there to buy ourselves some time. But to expand Waterville, um, to add eight classrooms is going to require an, an expansion of the cafeteria and an expansion of the gymnasium facility.
So, so I'm going to come back around. So I don't want Waterville to expand much more, but what I, what I have now is, um, I'm at capacity and I've got two classrooms in the Portables that held us off. So when you're looking at that, your, your, those additional classrooms would be, you've got, is it 3K? CDC that's outside, two fourth grade that's outside, and then you have your 3K outside. So when you start adding that, I'm not looking to add more students. I'm looking at more to accommodate what we already have there. That right now, we're not, we're not able to...
I guess, I guess...
We're over the limit.
We're at 630 students right now.
Yeah.
So if, so I get building to accommodate getting rid of the Portables, that's still going to alleviate the growth.
Yeah.
So, so the next, uh, the next item in the projection.
Hold, hold on just a minute, Corey. So when I'm also looking at, um, some of the interior classes that I've taken with special ed, um, you know, we've gotten multiple... We would also be able to accommodate them, so then they would lose some room back. But that is for existing and some growth that may come there. But we, I don't want to get over, over 650, 700, 700 right there is a bathroom. You don't need to go any higher than that.
So that's about what they're at, yeah, so that is...
In the past, we've always said, and they're like, it is a, it's 600 kind of thing.
Yeah, 650.
Because you've got, you almost have to enlarge the gym and the schedule is unbelievable. To be in lunch.
What is the actual, what is the...
Yeah, they're, they're down, uh, they're... Yeah, they're, they're down, uh, they're, um.
I see a six grade class.
Yeah.
Waterville?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What's that?
Uh, now, we moved a special ed class, we relocated a special ed class there, so that helps some in one room. Uh, but what's happening now is I can still, the students now will trickle in, and so it's great on the by, great on the low, you know. And I will tell all of y'all, my kindergarten across the board this year were lower numbers than we've seen prior to. So instead of, we, I mean, we didn't, I didn't lose any teachers, I just didn't have to grow my kindergarten. And that typically has not happened, so when I tracked it across mainly the southeast and started asking questions across the state of Tennessee, kindergartens seem to be lower, and when you track it back, it looks like it's that COVID year. And so I pre-did, and I, and that's a prediction, I'm having data, that it's gonna shoot up in the next two years. So, um, when you start looking at that, cause your kindergarten actually feed, if that's what you look to feed. But this year, it seemed to be that my upper grade levels started, I had more students enroll, new students enrolling in the upper grades than I did that, that K one. Which is not my typical, it's usually the flip.
But, so go back to what, so you would say this is just to, this additional means that I'll make what's already existing.
Yep, and then we'll let it go.
Then, so this would be to accommodate what's existing, uh, add a, a small amount of capacity. But, uh, but the additional growth, the additional residential growth, uh, on the south side of the county, uh, would be met with a, what we would propose to be a new elementary school on the south side of the county. Uh, a location to be determined, uh, whether it's Blue Springs, whether Blue Springs is large enough, uh, or whether we look for another site, uh, it's at the Lord's discretion, but, uh, but the growth on the south side seems to be trailing a little bit behind growth on the north side. Uh, and, uh, and so there hasn't been as much urgency there, but, uh, but, uh, ultimately, the growth on the south side would be accommodated, uh, given the facilities we have down there would be best accommodated with a new elementary school on the south side of the county.
How many acres is it? How many acres do you have there?
Peter, maybe twenty acres.
You're talking about.
Nineteen acres.
Nineteen.
Nineteen point nine seven acres.
The question is, is the size, you cannot.
I have a paper, so I, for say, when I say I'll let my five bro.
There's also been an individual that has come and talked to me both last week and, and today, that is wanting us to consider a partnership, uh, with a, a large release that just took place.
The long one?
Uh, the property that we looked at previously with the board members.
The one that I got, that was right, that was on my, right, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, that is, that property is still on the table, uh, as of today. Yes.
So that, and, and it's, it was always that board decision, but when I look at the growth patterns, and I continue to watch, the Blue Springs area, I'm not seeing growth, and, um, several people reminded me that Blue Springs was one of the, the s- uh, smallest schools we had in the district, barely hitting two hundred even when it was here. So I would not, without, with the growth not being targeted there, my recommendation would be to look at a different property, um, for, for.
They're not selling.
Um, I, I think that the board would need to have that conversation.
And, um, when voice rang, where are those students over two hundred?
They might just flash by, like, lots and lots. Okay, let me throw out something I found out this morning, and I, I believe you all were, uh, Prospect come, come on, Chris, June Church.
Yes, yeah.
Beach Boars, Prospect School on the cafeteria side, um, they're coming to sell the property. Uh, their, their, their youngest youth is seven years old, so the church is down, and I think it's fourteen acres. So I don't know that we're very interested in what you think about, but that's, uh, that's in one of our, so what's, that is a lot.
That we needed forty, you just said we needed forty acres?
Yeah, but that would be.
Yeah, this is just a pad on.
Oh, right.
Yes.
The problem down the frame is not, not carefully, and if they, if they, if they're not. And we could raise it far. And we put the prospect expansion, is it one of the ones that we touched in that we have to bring everything else up to?
Yeah, there was, there was a certain section that was there in front that we were proposing to go ahead and bring that.
We're still doing, there could still be an addition at.
This.
Yeah, and this property, this property, it runs up to the prospect property right there at the cafeteria.
You, you think that's fourteen acres?
That's what I heard today, fourteen, and I also heard the, they were, they were making the Netherlands offer to the schools to, to make.
Okay, I'll start with that one.
Okay, when you went to the Michigan Avenue school, of course, that school is in capacity for twenty-four acres.
You can't, you gotta get that grade on there, you know, and figure that out, you ain't gonna do that.
Uh, you know, I don't know, I, I think if you couldn't spend there, it would be cool to, as well, cause all of those schools run in that area.
Well, especially Michigan Avenue.
Uh, I'm made to hike, but subdivision is going on that type, we should have five hundred homes. Um, and, and you know, they tell us to go one point eight per door to figure out what that's food.
Right.
Right there, so that's.
When they talk about.
Also, please, without, they are sad, they're. It is, and Kyle may want to, Kyle Portman want to speak to this more because that's the, uh, probably, uh.
Including utility addition.
Oh, yeah, there's.
Awesome.
So that, that project, that five hundred year project is, uh, let's say delayed, but not dead.
Right.
Or that.
Right.
Not that high.
Yeah.
They aren't that high.
It's a whole.
So the five hundred, are those numbers included in your estimates for broken accounting?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
That is.
Yeah.
So, so by the time, remember, and, um, Pete and Susan made one correctly, but from the time that you say we're gonna build to the time we have a school, is two, two years at least.
Uh, okay, and this is.
Eighteen months to two years, eighteen to twenty-four months.
Yeah, I mean, eighteen months is extremely quick, if you just purchase one and survey this.
Yeah.
I think.
And you're looking at two years.
Twenty-four, yeah, you're, you're thinking two years, that's right.
And just to throw it out there, because this came from the Charleston City Council, and this has been thirty-four months ago, that there was a farm, um, building out toward Water Valley behind Charleston Elementary that there was a developer, and it would be four hundred homes in there, and if you do four hundred, it would be one point eight. Now, I don't know what happened with that, but it was the four hundred homes, I don't know what happened. I know it was still on the table the last time heard, but had not been upgraded. So that's big, too.
That is.
Yeah. For college.
So, so that's, uh, your areas, and I, I think now would be a good time to stop, and what questions do you have, what do you, yes, sir.
Could you not be able to help it, because for close points, you had to go along with the order from what we did? Now, hopefully, I'll, I'll argue, but.
You like.
Waterville is ready.
So, a new, a new elementary school.
Right.
Uh, we've got.
Of course, you got it late.
Co- Co- has, Co- has provided some recent, uh, school builds, and I don't know, Pete, if you wanna speak to this, uh, but, uh, uh, we're looking at the capital project being about, we've a budgeted forecast about thirty-two million dollars for each of the new proposed elementary schools. Uh, new projects.
Is that in addition to the land cost?
It is.
Okay.
And so, so that would be hard costs, which are running around, you know, twenty-six to twenty-eight million for the physical construction of, soft costs, all the design and engineering, permitting, all of that. And, and because these are new schools, all the furniture fixtures and equipment would be capitalized into that as well.
Why do you call that, how much, what you're commenting on, cut that off the ones.
The, the Waterville project was about, the Waterville project was about.
Your comment, but, yeah, you're, but if you don't do something.
But if you build another, you could move those kids to that school.
I'm not.
Depends on where.
You know, well, if there's also much to build, even, uh, out of Taylor Elementary, Smith, and I'm in several areas out there. Uh, there's water, and we're talking about the summer, also, and it's a big priority. The place possible to expand, I don't know, they were, they're gonna base it on that, I haven't felt that on the land for, or building a primary school.
I, I think there's, um, the issues in the front end, I don't think you have enough property, I, I have to look at the property and look at the scope. That, the, the current building there, the, um, plumbing, electricity, and everything, it's several of it. Um, that you would basically have.
We have a significant, upscale of the interior state to try to make.
And you, and you don't have the, you don't have the, the board that's coming into that area versus some of the areas that would feed, so you also have to put your bus route, however, these kids gonna be on the bus, where are we working them from? Um, there, there's a lot of the regular that, but what we have to watch even further down the road, actually, is if you, if you continue, if, if Valley view opens up, it's Taylor, opens up, the internet, I have to look at something that feeds, feeds those. Right now, the housing that we see coming in is going to feed those one part view. Um, in the, in the past, I think I've shifted kid, just to keep Taylor up to their numbers. I've shifted kids from Parkview to Taylor, uh, to try to keep those numbers up, and then to give Parkview a little more room. And, um, so you don't, I don't have a whole lot of room to shift kids to Taylor because of where it sits. But if, and I've heard this too, property owners out there are, continue to look at selling their land, which would cause an explosion in that area.
I'll just take it just from the trend, I mean, that's part of that.
Yeah.
Taylor, all in that area, that there's gonna be so much growth, I don't know if it's necessarily either that nor, but it's in that same area.
Yeah.
But the part of the southern growth, all that part of this county is utility, that'll be.
Yeah.
It's waiting, uh, they're waiting on, kind of, expansion of their own treatment and, uh, faith or stock, I think that's.
Exactly, like, utility.
Yeah.
Well, and you know, when you have Valley View, and you have Taylor, and you have Charleston, and you care, they're both paying it, but I'm thinking, you know, you go in with some sort of expansion, like, if that does occur in Charleston, what are you going to do? I mean, really, or if you go in, you need these services, and you have that issue.
That, moving kids, that reflected, reflected.
Farm.
Taylor would be where you would really want to look, uh, that could, you know, we've got Valley coming up there, that would be where, instead of, and, no, no, this is not going to be popular. And you're mo- you're more likely to be able to expand Taylor than you are to find, cause you can't expand Valley. It's, I see that.
Those, those, if they need for expansion, I suppose, but those would start with more, uh, they can't use kids. Uh, those are not neighborhood, so they would add to, for any addition with the city, these are actually county expansions.
You decided on how area that you were showing you, that on that, or those county expansions, is it? Do I?
Okay.
Yeah. So right now, I don't have any big indication that there are new subdivisions going up in there right now, but eventually they will go that way, cause they'll be out, the rent will happen.
Can we go back to that slide right there real quickly, I wanna make sure I understand kind of the, the, the growth and, you know, we talked about the utility district and all that kind of business, what I wanna get some visibility to is what is the most likely scenario of new homes being built within six months, within a year, within eighteen months, within twenty-four months? Because I have heard the issue, okay, well, no, because the resident there five hundred plus, that is.
That's the one.
That's the one that, you know, we kinda have to talk to that, we really don't know, we don't, we don't know.
That falls, that falls in the southeast, okay.
Yeah, so of, of those numbers, I'm looking at county hundred and one, that looks like that's pretty solid, and we would rest that to the southwest, I'm, I'm thinking of the northwest, that seems to be, you know, trivial, uh, uh, what I'm worried about is northeast, which is already, they're growing.
And I would say that my response would be that the, the new home starts on the northeast are real and are underway.
Okay, so, so.
That five hundred units that's proposed, but delayed because the utility district, those are in the southeastern quadrant, they're, they're, if you notice on the map there in the brown, so, these are, these are real.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I've been out there, I've seen that, so what I'm looking for is, like, within twelve months, what's your best estimate of, of rooftops that are completed? Twelve months, what does that number look like to y'all?
Uh, in that zone, I think it can be around six hundred.
Within twelve months, okay, the next question is, do you think all of those are going to be sold?
I know the funding model that Horton uses, they're not building unless it's already sold.
Okay.
Where are you talking about, circle, maybe?
Northeast.
Where? What, what areas? You're going up there.
Michigan Avenue.
Oh, it's all.
Michigan Avenue.
You've got Michigan Avenue, you've also got the cross that we drove when you turned at Fish Creek Market.
Yeah. So, so, so you're thinking six hundred within twelve months would be sold, and how do you all think about children per household?
There's been, there's been a lot of conversation about that, nationally, it's like one seven, one eight per household.
Yeah, yeah.
Pre-specified capacity study in depth about what we projected growth could be, and did a lot of historic research as to like recent developments, how many of those households did have kids, and it was like eighty percent of households had one point eight kids. So we, we have used.
Eighty percent of households had one point eight kids, so one point four, one point five per household.
Yes, sir.
And you also, you also skewed that a little bit, because these are not retiring homes, these are not retirement communities, these are, these are kind of starter homes with their price point and their size, these are starter homes in family, for you.
Of those six hundred that you're talking about, the older developments, how many of those are annexed to the city? That are, that are, that are planned to be annexed to the city. The majority of all those in that quadrant, so it's not just DR, you've got DR as well as Tom K, who's got the Tomlinson College right there. That he's got fifty-seven hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty-two going in there, uh, so you've got, you've got Tomlin up in North Lee, you've got DR, and you've got, uh, something up there with, with an R.
Well, I'm visiting every, uh, something about, right across from, on that, there's a, there's a great, there's forty-seven.
That area is huge.
I didn't say city, but that would be city office. But it's still. It's still Michigan Avenue and whatever's there. The thing about the convenience issue is what we're running into in the county, and you've got the passing by county schools with parents, parents are no longer putting their kids on buses, in many cases, they're driving to the school. And so the only kids that end up on buses are parents that can't afford to take them, so we've got a lot of kids that are being driven from city residences by our county schools and being dropped off there in the fast instead.
So you also have to remember, uh, both, the county and the city residents pay county taxes.
Yes, and I would argue, if you, if I live in the city, if I'm in the county, I should, I'm not probably going to go. I believe that would just.
How many?
If I'm in the industry, pay county taxes.
And how many counties do you have in the city?
Huh?
Yeah, they're in there.
Yeah, two.
Bradley, hell, coffee.
Bradley, North Lee, Curly, uh, Michigan Avenue, but the tip of it.
Yeah, yes.
You know, Oak Road's at the tip of it, Parkview's at the tip of it, I mean, your, your annexation is in Holdwell, is at the tip of it.
I should get to those Taylor.
Taylor Charles has, now, you're the ones that are.
Somebody bought, yeah.
They're in the county.
Okay, I have, the city, what do they plan to do with their live annexation, what is their idea of that?
The, the, and I can only tell you about a home that I have, that's the only, um, school that I have heard, um, and this is, uh, still is, and when I talked about the new, um, area across from, um, Hardback Farm.
That's where the.
That's the only one, and that neighborhood, that neighborhood is set to have over six hundred homes in it, so.
Be able to.
So you said that quarter that are, one of those.
Yeah.
And that, that quarter that.
Right.
Now, I wanna make sure I'm saying that, because you said the city for six hundred, you have county two, so that number up here that we've got for the northeast, that would yield from a hundred to six hundred, that.
This number, well, this graph does not include the Hardback Farm, which is an additional six hundred, proposed residence, is six hundred. Six hundred, single family, and they proposed a lot of two-volt family law.
So why do we not include that in there?
Because that's not been. That hasn't been sent, it's only conceptual at this point, it hasn't been sent for any sort of land.
We don't know, but that kicks that from seven hundred and fifty-two to thirteen hundred.
So that is at least the area we need to be looking at as far as.
We believe that was bad.
But when that, if, if. But when that, if, if that's the area that a new elementary school goes in and the proposed subdivisions and housing that goes in there, that school would absorb that name, those, those
Yes.
Okay.
The, the Hartwood Farm itself's development would fill up the city school. That would not include all the other growth that's still going on up there.
Okay, but we're talking about, and I was addressing all of this, great state, but we're talking about spending millions of, the bill don't live, let's take your one right now, and then where it goes still, didn't you say?
Because of your
That's what I'm trying to ask you. Uh, I think whether you, the bills are, if we won't put on, we ought to have one city. We shouldn't be, we just
It, it will, it will
We just don't need to go in there.
It will add, it, it, are you talking about waterfall?
Yeah.
It will add some new, it's going to get you to about seven hundred instead of the six thirty-five that's sitting there. That's a lot of
I said, I did, Oakwell's their school, come, we did, and they were growing on everything there.
I think my concern with waterfall, Mr. Bryson, is that I already have two classes in portables that are full grade right now. I have a class of preschool special ed students that are, now, I know the, the pre-K out there, that sits in the other two portables are technically
But that'd be four classrooms and that wouldn't have, have you deal and you
Right, right.
We're not talking about that classroom, that's
My recommendation would be just to look at
The four.
Yes.
I would, I would maybe look at, I would
We need those portables out there.
Yeah, and those are not our portables. Now, you're paying a monthly lease. Yep.
But the thing about, the thing about that
Overcapacity.
Yeah.
That's why we're
Yes.
It's not, there's outskirts of it.
But, and it, yes, you can't turn any of those kids away and send them back to the city, because there's no city kids there, every single kid's there.
Unless they're teacher checked.
A county student, unless
But where'd they come from? If they're not in waterfalls, I don't know, where'd they come?
They are.
They are, that's what I'm saying, they're all in waterfalls, there's no out of zone kids there except teachers, because I asked that question.
But you, you've got twenty-nine. You're right, relatively small.
Well, they're especially places, so we bring, I would less than some kids from the specialty classes there, waterfall.
You, you have concentrated schools that house special ed, and the reason behind that is because I can provide more quality services and more services and transportation.
Do, do the cohorts count for that scope or does it go to the paper?
Um, they
You know that
Mr. Bryson, I have to go back and check out.
Oh, that would be fire.
It gets back to their original, their
Their special ed. Their zone school.
Goes back to their zone school. But you also have, um, Oakwell is, is on this end, Waterfall's on that end, and then I have the elementary behavior classes at Oakwell. And then you've got both your middle schools, uh, one, one serves the south, one serves the north, and the same thing with the high schools when you move in special ed.
But, but just for the record, I'm not for building waterfall to be, I'd, I'd see over like six hundred and fifty-six, I think that's too big. I just think we should house and have the
I'd make
I want services for the students.
Do somewhere else.
Get those portals out there, got them in, uh, real well, yes.
So, so if I'm hearing you, it's four classrooms and do not touch the cafeteria, are they down?
Can we do four classrooms without touching?
Yes, okay, because it's just kids that are
But if, when you go, I don't forget, there's a, you can go ahead and say, money, and say, we're going, we need to, ain't be order, boy, we're not having those theaters, we're just, when we have schools that they can move, problem, problem.
Remember, Mr. Bryson, you're also, you're also looking at busing, so, you know, I don't have
I'm looking where waterfall is.
I don't, Mr. Bryson, there aren't many schools that I have room at all, I don't have like schools that I can ship a hundred kids to or ship, well, I, I don't have, I don't, I don't have that kind of capacity.
And the kids can't be on the bus.
Are we going to build a lot? Honestly, it would feel a lot money and it would deserve at Oakwell, and the commission came through and taken, and I'm thrilled.
Yes, and I love them.
And maybe they'd say, maybe they'd say, build it up, maybe it would, I don't know, but I just say to me, like, you can't keep building on a scope, eventually
It's, it's
If we build that field, if we
It's, it's your timeframe when we choose to do it, that's your biggest thing.
My, um, Mr. But, if we, uh, if we build on for school, not build a new school, then the city doesn't get any of that money, right?
Yes, it does, yes.
Or just when we
If we ask, if we want to borrow the money
Okay, if, if you have to park it, then they get the money.
It doesn't matter what kind of construction.
Okay.
Depends on where we can make from.
Okay, got you.
So, so remember, the Board of Education is funding prospect, the Board of Education, uh, funded, I don't even have a list of the, or, part, part view, not prospect, part view, right?
The front, right?
Yes, it's the, yes, apparently, the front, Bradley. Not with them, okay.
Is this like, um, right? I don't have the chart.
I don't know if there's So, so your biggest thing today, Mr. Bryson, in my opinion, is to lay it all out there. These are our needs, this is what's out there, this is what we're going to have, and then you've got to make some decisions about
But we keep telling them, we can help, we can, we need to build school, we need more school, and then, but then we're going, we're going to build on this hill first and build on this hill. That's a lot of money.
It, it is a lot of money, but you're also looking at serving families and students, so at some point in time, you, you need to look at that, that whole concept, that whole
But if we build a school, so, I'm just saying, I didn't say they'd say, but at Johnson, the summer, just say that, would that not take care of water?
You, you could, depends on how long are you, how long are you waiting?
Hey, if you go, you might find us though.
Yeah, it's just how long are you waiting?
Well, and one concern I have too is your government, it wants to, you can have about one point four, one point five, and you're talking about six fifty-two or eight, I don't know, that's all now, that's okay, but you're talking about that, well, then what happens to those kids when they go to middle school or high school? Because then you're going
That's what we saw.
You got a, we, uh, Lake Forest, you got, right, we got, what's going to happen with that many more kids in secondary school?
And, and we
I mean, I know that's down the road.
We as a district, and with the science wing and with Pi, we as a district have kind of already grew, grew our upper grade levels to add some options and some options. So now that we're putting elementary in motion, the next step's going to be the expansion of your middle school. That will then give you three options, you can split up Cooley, you have Lake Forest on the south, and you have a middle school on the north.
And then
Yep, and so with Pi, with the expansion of, rather than science wing, we're extending some of the capacity at the secondary level, uh, to also what we need. The other thing about secondary is especially once they get into that junior and senior season, you have opportunities to complete secondary enrollment, just a lot of different opportunities to get in the wise that we can.
What's the max, it's up to students, you know, about, uh, sixty minutes?
People don't ride the bus. People are buying by car.
Mr. Bryson, my buses are old.
So, so going back to the northeast piece, that seems to be the critical path for us in this, in terms of decision point. And I think I've gotten some visibility with respect to the homes that we legitimately believe are going, reset five hundred to six hundred in the next twelve months, we're talking about per pupil. I kind of want to know what is, cash your contingency plan, because it seems to me you've got two scenarios, you can build a school and the growth doesn't happen, and you build a school you don't need, or you don't build a school, the growth isn't what they expect, and now you've got a real problem. So I want to know from your perspective, if the school's not built and experienced the growth, what is your contingency plan?
You, you would end up having to put portables to, uh, to, to keep those students.
Okay, um, and I noticed we talked about city schools, our city students that are in county or out of zone, and really about the only school that has a significant portion, that's North Lee, is that right, roughly?
Now, there's, there's numbers that anyone
But what you call
I mean, there's, but that's, but that's most
But the city's got a lot of county kids too.
I understand that.
So we, but about, about, they've used about
They're not building any schools.
Huh?
But they're not building any schools now.
If we took our kid and we sell them back to the city, we could do that, we'd lose all that money, and then the city could send our kids back to us if they wanted to, that it would, but you could. And it's just like, here we used to talk about, uh, out of county, we used to, your break told me, did it bounce out? Up there around the county, the law, the, the
It's a long time since it bounced, that per student, per end grade, when you're going to build a new school, it may bounce out, it's going to be a mean year, so, I mean, we're talking billions against, what is, seven thousand four hundred?
Right, yeah.
That's what
That's what the Discussion with Donald.
I'm not getting here, I said the students bring, what, what you're talking about is about seven thousand four hundred, and to build a school is, are you willing, must somebody consider it?
You want to give a lot?
I'm sorry, good.
You want to give all the city kids up, the city?
Here, here's, here's my, my, my honest philosophy on that is, um, I don't know for how many years, but I've been here, I'm on my eleventh year, long before I ever got here, that, all of that was taking place, kids could go from the county to the city, you have legacies of students doing that, I think that, uh, that it would be a mistake, and the reason being that is that you're in a world of parent choice, right? And so if a parent who is paying county taxes and we, we, we can accommodate those, then I believe it is the right thing to do to take those, the same thing with the city. If we have, have families that want to go to the city, but they live in the county, and they, they, and if the city does charge, uh, but if that's their choice, then that, that's where we are. So I think if you, if you start saying, oh, we're sorry, you know, we're not going to take you, then you've, you've got to set a precedent, do you, or are you not? And I said, I'm going to recruit, so, you know, where are you on, on that continuum? So Christopher Cash, we, we lived in the city, he was a, he was brother in high school resident.
We all
And, and I had to jump through some hoops with, with some things, not with, with residency, but with others, so I think that when you start saying, you can come, but you can't come because you live in the city and you live in the county, I think you're creating something within our community that is not healthy. And that, that is my down front, honest opinion.
I've known, but I just talked very often, hey, with L.A., I don't know, Josh knows more about that than I do, but, so I'm not going to give up.
It, it is, and you start saying that, the, the money follows the student, that is the honest to goodness, so if you've got a seat that is vacant, and I can fill that classroom, then that is exactly what I should do. The only reason that I can see not doing that
Like a waterfall, you would want it.
No, waterfall you wouldn't want to do now, because
That'd be like
Because you can't, but I'm just going to take Rutherford County for instance, Rutherford County gets grown so fast, they can't build the schools fast enough to get the kids in, they cannot do it. So what they're doing is they are, uh, taking kids and putting them in an elementary school that might have room, and those kids in that one neighborhood may be in several different schools because they're just trying to fit them in and move them in.
One of them
My, my fear is that the growth is coming, the home developments are coming, it takes you twenty-four to thirty months to build a school. If you wait and you say, well, it may or may not happen, then you're, you're going to be behind the
Okay, but I think, so that, you're the director, you've heard all this, and you know it before we came in here. What is the most important, in your opinion, that we could, and if you tell me, and I'm on the commission, if we don't know the waterfall, and I love it, I was president, great so, I don't know what it costs, what would it cost to build what, that waterfall, what would that cost?
Well, the eighth classroom expansion with the cafeteria in gym was seven point three.
Me?
If we, if we, if we drop that, if we drop that
Seven, we're going to wait, hold up and
If we drop that to four classrooms and eliminate the cafeteria and gym, you're probably looking at the same as Parkview, but that's about three.
But if your growth is on
But you can, we can A new school, and build off the hope we did, that's great, and we got that fair, we made room on that. What would that have
I, I think I would take, honestly, Mr. Bryson, I have to take my direction from the board, but, but what I'm seeing with all the homes and everything that are out there, is you, you need to focus on the, a new elementary school, that will
More than going on. If you had to pick?
Well, I'm on all of it.
I know, as well, you know, I was just explaining, but I agree with you.
We're the ones You'd have to make the hard decision, but based on where I see the house growth and what I'm seeing is predicted, I would go more.
What would they recall, well, not the problem, you know?
Thirty-two, thirty, you have, you have
Thirty-two million.
You have the
Forty-six, seven million, and then ask them, thirty-two million, you don't get it.
You, you have the Dry Valley property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You're going to have to shift, you can shift some, you're going to have to rezone home, so that you can, and when you rezone, hopefully you give it capacity back to some of the other schools so that they can absorb some kids. So when you're going in that direction, you're making a full switch.
Okay, when I was a mom, we got like six hundred, did, nobody else know, nothing I had those, just like, I wanted to put them wherever you got, and we, but, and it was, I was, but what I'm saying is, uh, if we build that, is there another way? I don't know, maybe there's one. Come on, who forgot to bid, partially because Blue Springs
Correct.
And, uh, some of that, we, we took them and Blackfoss, Blackfoss used to have about two hundred and students, and they started, and they had a, taught it, he never had, and he figured out, when they, when Blue Springs closed, Blackfoss rolled us red carpet, and then would kiss him over, the teachers, and then, but don't you, that's what you do, and I'm just saying, you've got to decide which is the most important, I don't care if they hear what I'm saying, I'm
I, I think you have to look at the data that's in front of you and the data is telling you.
And you're telling us that says we need to build a school up?
I think
More than anything.
They're telling us, I, they're telling us, and the data is telling you, not necessarily. Well, it is a better decision, though.
Right, I know, she still knows, and she's got, and you, I would say, I'm going to listen to her once again.
Mr. Bryson
And she listens.
When you look at the housing growth, the predictive housing, that's where, that's where it's headed.
Oh, you know, going up toward our, for
Yes, sir.
There's a big old nice, brand new seven, they're still building in there, where'd those kids go, Michigan Avenue?
Michigan Avenue, North Lee.
Well, they could go that beach, but
Correct, that's what we're talking, that's the
Yes, that's what, yes.
Where are we getting both lines, we look, and I said
Did we miss a question from you?
Don't matter to me.
Plates, plates, you say so.
Right, I've heard from Kyle with respect to your conviction of the houses, is that coach position as well?
Where did it go?
With respect to, with respect to the growth and the timeframe?
We, we've checked with county, uh, building department
Yeah, yeah.
To see how many permits have been issued, and what has been zoned, and, and like you said, a lot of those, they've already broken ground, they're, they're already under construction.
Okay, so, so you all, you all have the same conviction within twelve and eighteen miles, okay?
And how long does it take to build a new school? You said twenty-four, thirty, twenty-four?
Take them about two months, or how?
Keep in mind, yesterday in the paper, S.K. had their brand open
Oh, yes, they did.
Eight hundred and forty new jobs that have been done.
And they set up a five And they set up a five later.
Keep in mind, S K has announced their expansion on their plan as of yesterday into their phase two, to take in another substantial amount of jobs. So the job market here is gonna be extremely hot and the growth in this direction is not gonna slow down at this point. You can talk to John Barry at the chamber, if he feels any different, but we're tracking the same number of days.
Anything else, Mr. Smith?
I'm not on that topic, no.
I'm just, okay, so we've had this part of people's worth fourteen acres.
No, ten.
Nine, nine acres, and that's not being enough to build a school.
So?
No. And so, and right now it doesn't look like growth's going that way, or like, right? So would it be beneficial to us to investigate selling the Blue Springs property to help us with these other projects?
Is that one of your priorities, Mrs. Smith?
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
If we're not gonna, if we're gonna build a, if we're not gonna build a, but I love to take, sell, what takes that for? I put a price on it, cause we don't have to sell it, and if somebody wants it, they'll buy it.
Last time.
Big one that. About three hundred.
And what do we make last autumn?
About three hundred. It's right for almost four, or less.
We got official forty acres.
About forty acres.
Uh, the forty acres plus now that one.
It would come to twenty-one.
But it's all about the catch, you know, catch, it's not gonna sign.
I don't, I don't know that one, I don't know.
So that would be worth the cost of the house, okay?
So selling that property is.
But it would help, yeah. That's, yeah.
Going back to what Mr. Kyle said earlier about, you know, Texas long time type or a school by stop of students. So if you build a school, that was six hundred and fifty statements, based off of the B E P fund, that's about four point eight seven five million a year. And if you did thirty-two thousand, or thirty-two million, it would take us about six and a half years to pay off a new school.
How much, the best, the best money that's seven thousand four hundred is for operational costs, you gotta pay for this.
Right, yes, and then, I mean, I'm just saying, just to pay for the school itself. No, no utilities, about six and a half years.
Uh, you could take that for your third.
I just did the math for you, Mr. Ross.
Yeah, all day, that would be, not that simple. I just believe it, but.
Now, that, that.
We can, we can build a school every six years, dude.
Well, but I, I said, I mean, go back and refresh and say, that's just to pay for the building. That's not the utilities, not, not the future children, that's not all the things, that's just the pay.
The Dry Valley, the final settlement with, for all enclosing costs and all the things, was one point zero three million.
One?
One point zero three million.
About, oh.
Without, mhm.
We cut four net, Walker Valley.
Yes.
Walker Valley was more.
Walker Valley, yeah, for the.
And how many acres is it?
Walker Valley?
No, the, the.
Twenty.
The one that's being added.
Dry Valley's forty.
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 Oh, I like, I do like that, Walker Valley.
That's fifty-two, with, with the water.
I mean.
Okay, uh, are you guys finished? Okay, well, you've given us a lot to think about, one certainly, and to prioritize, and this board will have to decide within the next few months. Do you have something else?
Do you want to draw like this meeting, I know the track has been a conversation, as well as the gym, the gym of Lake Forest conversation.
I think that is their, their will, yeah.
Are there, are there other capital projects that you want to include in the priority discussion?
I like Walker, that's where my kids go, I, I remember. But I did not used to believe it, but I believe if you went and investigated, you'd find out that that forest needs a new, a small, you know, kinda like Oakway Middle, it's unbelievable what they, you know, I was saying, and I'd say, when I come out, to an high degree, and I put it between the cafeteria and that dam, and I make that break around, I was pre-communicating, not near laughing. A big gym, and I think we need to consider it.
Okay, you're talking about Lake Forest Middle School in the second gym.
You know, it don't matter if it's a milestone or not, I think they need, uh, and of course, we know Oak Valley, that they're a new deal.
Yes, I know that, um, Ms. Lee contested that students at Lake Forest are coming at six A M. to practice, to get everybody.
They need a gym.
Caroline.
They're the only, they're the only secondary school that has a house.
I thought I'm believing, but I went and said to myself, and saw what I went, they tell me, they're, they're practicing whatever.
I dropped ice cream off, and we was investing, I dropped him off at six A M., and I was picking Caroline at eight P M. in the volleyball.
Okay, that's a capital project, and was probably maybe others. What?
Complex, Walker Valley. The gym, and the youth school up there, evacuation, the youth project, the sports, not that cheap, not somebody talking about.
So, so one of the things that, uh, and this is, uh, uh, just an idea, there's nothing, but I, I did ask, I asked Pete to do a lot, and I think he rolls his eyes at, but, um.
How do you know?
Um, so, uh, if, if you built a, um, sports facility at the, the, the Lauderdale property, before you could build a new school, I think Pete looked at, I don't know if that's there or not, Pete, but, um, you're looking at about ten million for that somewhere, do you remember that?
To which, that was Walker Valley, Walker Valley, it was trying to like, it would tie in also.
On the Lauderdale property?
Yeah, we added a, uh, athletic facility before we built the school.
Yeah, cause your new school is running, a new middle school would run.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty million.
Fifty to sixty million today.
Today?
No, no, sorry, we brought it from Lake.
Yeah.
The, the, the pitch would really be seventy-five, we gotta give the city twenty-five.
Yes.
Yep. Well, I thought, I said, we don't think, I said, we don't think they'll own water pump, cause we may have them shoes.
When you say.
Say, go to New York, like, for, they don't have them shoes, they just don't, maybe I did like.
Well, no, actually, Lake Forest, facility wise, they do have the students that, that show you need a second.
They did, I think, I did used to think about it.
Okay, a sports facility at the property on Lauderdale, you said ten million?
I think that's.
Yeah, I'm looking to pull it up.
Can I help you?
Yes, but that's, but that's, it would be ten million.
It's something, okay.
Yeah.
Kyle, you mentioned track, what we call a point of reference?
Yes, yes. I need to be tracking, it's just like, we got some main needs, and whatever, whatever, not, doesn't matter to me.
We start paying the rent's name.
Well, how many years?
We start paying the rent's name.
Yes, that's right, okay.
I said, how many years has the track been discussed?
Oh, we kicked, then, since I've been on board, we've been.
And we kicked the can with a new third middle school since Jerry Freeman, back in the eighties, that's, that third middle school. So, we have a lot of needs, I'm sure.
And I, I, I was, um, in the board before, in the initial.
Norm's.
But, but in the initial discussion on the track.
Oh, yes, I was, thank you.
So, I mean, I, we're, I know that we talked at one point in time.
So we put a budget to the track at one point in time, and we actually, uh, put some minimal design effort in, uh, more of a kind of a systematic, and a site plan, and then a preliminary budget. Um, the budget for just the track, the site work, the grade work, and then just a track, nothing else in addition to that. And they planned track, and then the two point, two point three.
Two point now.
Two point seven. Corresponding up.
Do you know?
How many tests of commission, how many, how many tests of, the commission is one point eight?
One point eight?
Yeah.
That's the, we have.
We're seeing a lot of, we have. The site for eighty, the track expansion was two point five.
Two point five.
For just the site, plus eighty, plus soft costs, and track, plus soft costs, so. So you're like two point eight.
Three million.
Huh?
Three million.
Two point eight.
No, three B's.
But yeah, also, um, does not include lights, any, anything else, that's just because of the track.
Just track and grading.
Well, it's not, no, but if you build it, they'll come.
So what, so what is the bare minimum, with respect to the bare minimum, for two, is that what you said?
Uh, with respect to the track, the bare minimum's gonna be basically two point eight. To, to expand the track to eight lanes, you have to shift it within the site plan, which means some additional grading and drainage. And so the additional grading and drainage, to retrofit some of the existing problems, and to fix some of the existing problems, and to accommodate a, a reconfiguration there, is about a million dollars of prep and site work, and then the actual expansion of the track is, is, is about one point five. That does not include soft costs, and it does not include lighting and those currents.
No, but it's not, because you're gonna hit that, so.
The, the bleachers, they can hold, some of it, they could hold them, some of it, they could, if we could get a, get a track.
And it would reconfigure it in a way that would allow for all of these other amenities to be added later.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
So they could.
We would configure the track, we would reorient the track within the site, and, and leave a pad for a future field.
Right, that's right.
Yes, thank you, yes. So, so they could fundraise, or down the road, the board could choose to fund a different project, but it would be left so that it's expandable, based on the needs that they have.
Okay, okay. If we, what you're talking about, they could have a track, maybe not enough, but they could, if we.
If you have eight lanes, you could host a track there.
But, I'm just saying.
Apparently you had six.
But you could do it, yes.
Are there any other capital projects that you want me to put on the list?
What would that?
What?
I, I.
I don't know, I can't guarantee that.
Uh, need some bleachers for.
What?
Be bleachers. Bleachers for the football field.
And?
Like.
Okay.
I'm not, I'll do that.
Is that your school?
No, I guess.
I miss it, I miss it, anyway, all the time.
They're not even down there, paying for home, and whatever, and they need it. They, they, you don't wanna sit there. They need them just to play, to be in, I don't know how much they cost, they're one, they're the only ones gonna play, play their game. I'm saying, somehow, or we all got it.
How crazy, yeah, all, all.
I, they're like, they're like.
They do that, they do that.
I, I think, I'm gonna say, they're next, they, they, they play sports down there, their games.
We're gonna be like, you know.
They're a good player, right?
Anything else? Um, I have a red forest gym, the sports facility at Walker Valley, the track at Bradley Central, and I did write them in the bottom there, leechers. Leechers, okay. All right, but those are the capital projects. And then, of course, we have to look at the schools and the things that were mentioned, and especially on the east being prioritized, where, where they can go next.
Who was it, somebody, Walker Valley, we're talking about big lights, or something, is that, or is that in Johnny Moll's interview stuff?
It, we, we pull it from, from their, um, regular capital. So the lights that, for that were in the regular capital alley for this year, or the Walker Valley.
I'm just saying, y'all, I feel like far against the, like, the tracks, and not more important than the English books, or what, and the tanks, or, or buildings, or whatever, but, like, Dr. Collins had a big, I mean, I said, why don't you build a few tracks up there and that same, hey, now, it's your age, man, you're not, he said. And I said, your professors don't like that, he said, and now they know who's in charge. And he said, we're at Lady University, we're about to total shoot, and if you talk about that, sports is definitely far. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's not gonna be done in front of this, but, but they ought to be considered, and when, if we could build, if we could get that right, then in the few years, or a couple years from here, we could build this, or we could do that. But we can't build that, we, oh, we, oh, we might, the water conditions always said, and if we not add some, I'm, I'm just saying it's possible.
Okay, I have those things listed, and we're going to fund one seventy-seven construction projects, Ellen Smith?
Yeah.
Okay, so, just, just for clarification, while, um, Ms. Smith is, um, showing the, the other stuff, the, um, the, the data that, that is shown to me, and confirmed by the architect, as well as, um, and having been driven around, to show me where things were coming, i- if I had to have a priority right now, it would be the school on the Dry Valley.
Yes, you're right.
I just wanna clarify that for, for y'all, if, and it's for me.
You wore it off.
For, for, yes, sir. Um, but, I don't think that you, I, I think you have to be very careful about, uh, you know, there's lots and lots of things that we need and we want, but when the, when your data starts to say, this is coming, and knowing how long it takes to build anything, you, you've got to be more proactive than you do react.
But I'm saying, and they're sitting here, where we're saying, if we, they took the money to commission, if we could convince them to put a little more with it, if we sold Blue Springs, and put that money, which we didn't count on happening, for, we could put that money, we want all they had, and we could have a decent track. We could have that couple of windows, a picture of the building, and then, we have, I, I'm just saying, not give them ten million dollars or whatever, but if, if we do want a track, and, and they, and want them gifted, I don't know, if we sold Blue Springs, we could count on having that, huh? If we're, if we're gonna sell it, and say, if we sold it, it'll go to. And, and say, maybe that's a little more, who knows?
Okay, um, so this is actually just an update from the chart that was, uh, proposed or provided in the April and May budget meeting, to update what really happened at June thirty rolling into July one. This does highlight that there is fifty-two thousand left for the Bradley Best of Build, that is not new funds, that is funds that were left at June thirty to remedy the financials items that we're still working through. Everything else, with the exception of Hopewell, is funded by local and state dollars, it's not the money that we are asking the commission for. And Hopewell, that is a low number, the full resolution's about fifteen million, that is what we estimate for this year, they've got about seven million budgeted, so I would anticipate a budget amendment at a later point in the year as expenses feed in for that, so that number will grow. But that is where we stand on all of the projects. We would, I would anticipate that the science wing number could also change, because that was an estimated local match, based on a number that is now three years old. Um, so once we get that actual construction cost in, we'll have a new local match number required. Is there any particular question about any project, that does the July with budgeted funds for each one? The biz team. What is an agile match? Um, well, the, the agile, that is, we are asking, um, uh, we are seeking two, um, grants. The one for, one, each one is worth five hundred thousand, and then we will, um, um, on Thursday's meeting, ask for some funds, um, from the, um, current, current budget money, uh, to move in that direction from the board, to do matching funds for those grants. We are also soliciting, um, funds from, um, other foundations, and then we have a lunch and learn. Um, coming up.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, that, that you restricted your question to. Okay. And just case, and aren't you, do, aren't you also the different boards that have been working with the biz team? So we have a representative from the board who can keep up with that, and maybe keep us posted in a few months about the progress for biz team. Any other questions about this?
I have a question on Hope, are, are Oakway Middle, it says one point two six, so is that what's left? Cause I know that we mentioned that we came in one point seven million, another project.
Yes, so that is representative of what is technically left for the project, but we do not anticipate spending that for the project. I don't remember where we were, but I know on this last pay, pay app that we got, we owe them about three hundred and fifty thousand left. So, um, we will have about eight, seven to eight hundred thousand left in that budget to then reappropriate to another project. And once we.
Where are the withouts, one point seven, that was in the budget?
At the point before we purchased Dry Valley, we needed five hundred thousand additional funds, so we transferred five hundred thousand in a budget amendment at about mid-year last fiscal year, from five hundred thousand of that from Oakway Middle back into one forty-one to purchase the land. Any other questions about the areas there? Ellen, I guess when you come up with a coin, some of these little project, not anticipating spending that, as far as the other projects later, are we anticipating spending those funds?
The only one that would probably change slightly at this point is we have real numbers for Parkview, that, um, obviously. The only one that would probably change slightly at this point is we have real numbers for Parkview, that, um, obviously we have, we're very early in the project, so things could change, right, but that would be the only one at this point that we would possibly know for sure that would happen in this project, say, Ms.
Okay.
Are we talking about, so, some of this, or, or for me?
No, th- these are.
No, not the, some, some, we're talking.
The priorities, no. I think this was just to make us aware.
Yeah, and then we'll have to come out and have a discussion, and then vote. So, come to a consensus.
Okay, anything else? You won't say anything on Thursday, so.
No, no, that's not, I think, Thursday.
I would've been guessing at that point, but.
Yeah, well, I will make sure it's not being.
Yes, you, you do, Mr. President.
Well, they, I've done that for a while.
Okay, are there any questions or comments about any of the items, or is there something additional you want to discuss about these items, not the, if they're not on the agenda, we do not discuss those, do you have something from this you want to discuss?
We, we're happy if we can, maybe I'll say, whatever we're betting, we, 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 we don't want to see.
But, but it will be.
Be like me, I thought.
But it will not be at this point, but, at the pleasure of the board, I mean, we can have another work session, and have a member.
We can wait till next year, whatever, maybe, but.
Kinda had some ideas, and give some, uh.
While it's fresh on the hunt.
Some direction for, on Dr. Cash, some of the others, some information, so maybe we can have another work session, and we'll, and try to have it well before we start our budget policy, or.
Okay, and, um, Dr.?
I just have a notice from Rachel.
Okay.
These had come in earlier, but I wasn't learning about, she just wanted to know about the growth on Blue Springs, specifically, uh, Levine Valley Road, south side.
Okay.
Don't have a, I have not been notified of anything, uh, from Ron's office on it, I don't, I'm not letting them know, it's not aware of. So, what, what's there to speak for, that I don't know, but I will follow up, verify, check.
So, can she hear?
She can hear, I, I mean, she's still on it right now, and she's asked, we were making notes, we have been diligent, that's my entire time, uh, that was just one thing that she wanted to ask.
Okay, can you, you know, work into that?
Yes, I will. Ms. Cohen's also requested during the meeting to cede the property, that I know Nancy has ceded, and others at the table have ceded, so, if any board members would like to, uh, take a look at part of the property that we have, that we have on the table currently, I'm happy to entertain that for Dr. Cash and, and. Yes.
Where Josh, and as far as a work session, Dr. Cash, do you want to get with Liz?
I do, I, I think you may not just push it, because you are in, um, you're in Nashville, and you are, um.
We can meet up there, couldn't we?
Oh, I know. We're so rushed, okay, yeah, I would, I would be more, more wanted to do it in like the first week in December, if I'm looking.
Y'all can get down there.
So, in November, remember, we have a board meeting on the eleventh of November. The board meeting is the eleventh, either way.
On the eleventh.
Yes, because T S B A, because the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth.
The eleventh is about, T S B A, that matters to you all, though.
Yeah, I'm coming back, the sixth. So, you're into the week of the seventeenth? Um, now, you could, you could do something that week, and then the next week, of course, is Thanksgiving. It looks like if you were looking at November, um, eighteenth. Can you check your funds or your calendars for November the eighteenth?
But, but we have a school board meeting on the eleventh, so right now we're looking at a work session.
Yes, just to look at our priorities.
We're at T S B A, it's the thirteenth to the sixteenth.
Right, right.
Uh, yeah, the eighteenth, or, can we move that meeting back, uh, a little bit later, as well as some of the, or. It makes it a little easier, at three thirty-four, can we move that back a little bit further?
You're gonna do five, like, the seventh or the eighth?
It'd be better from the morning, it'd be like the seven thirty, or I could do the later.
Seven thirty is more.
Okay, the eighteenth, give me a time, Josh.
Uh, move back to that, maybe around five or so. About five o'clock.
And you have.
The work session.
Oh, okay. I don't really say, is the afternoon better for everyone here at the dinner warning meetings? It doesn't matter to me.
Five, absolutely, five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yeah, no, we heard the eighteenth at five o'clock. And Liz will get something out about that, will it be here, or at the central office, or do we need to check?
We have to check.
Okay. Thank you, Liz, for checking.
I have a clarify, just, and in that up session, if you want to talk about kind of, just to finalize.
I'd like to maybe finalize that, at least, too, uh, so, if we start our budget policy.
Got it.
That's all, that, we've talked about.
Yes, sir.
And, and, and she doesn't like.
And we have all of that, and, and then Maple's projects, and the Hoots' one, I guess, minor ones as well, capital. Right, yes, okay, no, you said eighteenth at five o'clock, and you'll get notification at the place, and, um, so, is there anything else? If not, this meeting's.